Good evening. David and Alex are there. Good evening. I'm Jim Purdy, Chair of the Finance Committee. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01. This is a warrant hearing for the special town meeting to take place on October 17th at 10:00 a.m. at Pingree Field. The Finance Committee has four articles on the warrant. The other articles on the warrant will be discussed by other folks on the on the on the call here. So what I would like to do is start with Article One. I'll introduce the article just very briefly for each of the articles, and then I will have FinCom members read the article and open it up for any discussion or questions that folks may folks may have. The first article, Article One, for the special town meeting is the use of free cash to fund the 2021 Capital Improvement Program. It's listed, thank you, on the on the screen. Alex, could you please read the article?
Sure thing, Jim. Thanks. So Article One is for the use of free cash to fund the FY 2021 Capital Improvement Program. Further, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, a sum or sums of money to fund the town's FY 2021 Capital Improvement Program, including the acquisition, equipping, and all other incidental and related costs of items A through J as printed below. Item A is a highway department pickup truck with plow for $45,000. Item B is a fire department protective gear item for $30,800. Item C is also for the fire department SCBA breathing apparatus for $15,000. Items D and E are IT replacement computers for $10,000 and website upgrade for $13,500. Item F is for the iron rail for the design of a replacement septic system for $10,000. Items G and H are police department, G being your replacement cruiser for $42,000, and H being five replacement rifles for the first of two years with the following replacement in FY '22 for $7,000. Items I and J are related to the library, the first being server replacement for $18,000, and the roof replacement for $75,000. And as is, excuse me, noted at the bottom of the slide, the FinCom has recommended 5-0 for the recommendation for favorable action at town meeting for this article. Thanks, Jim, and I think we'll, thanks.
Just just one more. Just one more addition to the library numbers. That's a shared expense with the Town of Hamilton. They, the share is approximately 67% for the Town of Hamilton and 33% for the Town of Wenham. Actually, it's 34.04 and 65.95. So the $93,000 actually is picked, of that 93, 61,000, approximately 61,300 is picked up by the Town of Hamilton. Just just to further clarify those expenses. Any any questions from folks on the call regarding Article One? Use of free cash. This is free cash. It does not incur debt. It doesn't go to debt service. It's it's money that has been reconciled out of our approved free cash beginning in the fiscal year.
Jim, if we are getting some comments in the chat, would you like me to read the question we received in the chat just now?
That'd be great. Thank you.
So at this time, we have a question from Michelle Bailey. She's asking about the current age of the roof and if someone from the FinCom can speak to the need for roof replacement.
So discussion about this. Am I muted? I'm not muted, right? No. We had a discussion about whether this was still under warranty, and it's not. The it's been, the roof has been reviewed, looked at by inspectors and by the Department of Public Works, and it seems to be a unanimous agreement that the roof needs to be replaced. I don't know if that answers Michelle's question or not. Want to read that?
Jim, just to add, I think in in our discussions as FinCom or amongst FinCom and with town administrator and with Chris and Jackie, it was, I believe, around, it was stated, I think, around 20 years of age, the roof. So as Michelle points out, you know, it's it's roughly in that range as to the, you know, expected lifespan of a roof, you know, or how long before it fails and needs replacement. I don't think it's failing yet, but is in need of replacement. I think it's it's close to that. And I see Michelle's comments about 18 years, which, you know, I'd say is roughly 20.
Yeah.
But regardless, to your point, it it's been on the list of capital items for replacement.
Right.
Um, Jim, we did get another question in the chat from Joe Romano. And his question was, can someone clarify the summary paragraph at the end of the warrant? She's confused by the math regarding the starting 945005. Before I pass that off to someone on the FinCom, I think the number she's referencing is 954005.
Yes, yeah.
Capital summary as the total amount of certified free cash for fiscal '19. So I don't know if someone from the FinCom wants to expand further on where that comes from, that 954005, the free cash starting figure.
So the free cash is certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Finance Department of the Town of Wenham submits to the Commonwealth the availability of quote so-called free cash. It's certified. That means the free cash can then be, that number is 954, right? That that can be used to reduce the, any overrides. It could be used to utilize to purchase capital equipment. We are required to maintain a quarter of a million dollars in the free cash account, which is good accounting practices and required by, I think it's required by the Commonwealth as well to keep a quarter of a million dollars in that. Is that right, Jackie?
It's actually required by our financial policies that the Town of Wenham adopted. It's considered a best practice by the Commonwealth.
Yeah. I don't know if that answers, adequately answers the question.
Is it okay if I ask my question directly? Would that be all right?
Sure.
I'm just confused. Um, it said the balance was 954005.
Yeah.
And we transferred 499085 in July.
So Jim, if you're looking at the warrant, it's it's the start of the second page for Article One. So I think she's referring to that at town meeting in July, the town did vote as part of the Article One, Article Two, operating budget and free cash to move 499,000 and change from free cash to balance the operating budget.
Yeah.
Now, we're using additional free cash as part of that total 954 for funding these capital projects while balance of 250 in our reserves per the financial policies.
Right.
That answer your question?
So I guess my my question is, does the 499085 that was authorized in July? Um, is the amount in Article One on top of that 499085?
Yes, correct.
So doesn't that then leave us with a balance closer to 188,000 in free cash? Or am I doing the math wrong?
My understanding is that we have 250,000 that the Finance Department has certified as free cash, Jill. I don't know, Jackie, whether you have any other additions to that.
Oh, so Jill, I understand why your math's not working out. So part of the projects that Alex Beegan just went over tonight include two projects for the library.
Yes.
You receive roughly two thirds of the cost of the library projects back from the Town of Hamilton. So the total free cash that we were able to plug into the operating budget and to use for free cash includes that net revenue from the Town of Hamilton for the library's share of these projects.
That's what I'm missing.
Yeah, so that's that's the piece. So it's it's like roughly 63,000 if you add the two library projects together. They're 93,000, so it's about 61,000 that we're getting from the Town of Hamilton that are factored into the free cash numbers. So we'll get that money back through our billing process with the Town of Hamilton.
That's exactly what I was missing.
Thank you, Jackie. I'd mentioned that earlier, but I might not have explained it clearly enough. That's a that's a shared cost with the Town of Town of Hamilton.
Yeah, I just, I didn't recognize that much money coming back into the
Right.
So I understand it now. Thank you for explaining.
You're welcome. Any other questions on Article on Article One? Thanks, Alex. Appreciate your input. Can we go to Article Two? Okay, David Molantino will read this article. It's the transfer $150,000 from the reserve account of the water surplus from the Water Board to buy particular hardware and software. David, you want to review that, please?
Sure. That was a good summary, Jim. Article Two is the transfer from water surplus for water-related supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA hardware and software. This warrant is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 from water surplus for the purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition hardware and software to be used for monitoring the town's water system, including all incidental and related expenses. Provided further, however, that if such amounts have not been fully expended by June 30, 21, the balance of such appropriation shall close to the Water Capital Reserve Account or take any action noted thereto.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? The the quick summary and to ward off questions is our, not to ward them off, but hopefully answer them quickly is that the system that we currently have is out of date and is no longer going to be repaired by a company that we use, whichever it is, Horizon. So it's a it's a need for the Water Department. Any questions?
So we currently have $280,000 roughly in that account, 280,540 as stated, and we'll be moving 150,000 out of that for this this new SCADA, so-called SCADA system to monitor our wells and accurate accounting of how we're using our water. Any further comments or questions from the FinCom or questions from folks? Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move to Article Three, which I believe Mr. Weaver. Is that correct? Is going to read this. Is that, is Paul on? Jackie?
Uh, yeah, on that. One sec. I think I see. Paul Weaver, is that you under Peggy and Paul?
No, that's not Paul.
Okay.
I spoke to him last night. Let me see if I can find a telephone number for him.
Yeah, I did email him earlier, and he expected to be here. Jim, I don't know if you don't mind, maybe we can go to the next financial article, Article Five, and see if we can.
That'll be, that'll be fine. Sure.
Okay.
Wait for, see if Paul can join us. It's for both Three and Four. Is that correct? That's correct, Jackie?
Correct. Paul will be on Three and Four. So I'll just move the slide forward to Article Five.
Okay, we'll jump to Article Five, another Finance Committee article. And it's the adoption of a local meals tax and which would bring in some revenue to the community and Carrie Jelsma, Carrie, could you read that article, please?
Sure thing. So this is the local adoption of a meals excise tax that's already being collected at the state level. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 64L, Section 2A authorizing the imposition of a local excise in the statutory amount of 0.75% on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town or take any other action relative thereto." Jackie, could you go to the next slide, please? So the current state tax that's being collected at the state level is 6.25%. And then if we add the local collection piece to it, that's 0.75%. So here's an example. If you have a $10 meal currently, it's 10.6, it would be 10.63, and that 63 cents goes to the state. If we adopt the local option, it will bump the tax rate up to 7%. So a $10 meal will cost $10.70. And about 63 cents of that goes to the state, like I mentioned a moment ago, and about seven and a half cents will go to the town. This is not, this this money is already being collected by the state, and it requires no work by the town. And I'm just looking at some questions coming in to the chat. I'll go over those in a moment. Right now, there's about 341 towns in Massachusetts. 241 of the towns have already adopted the local option. And some estimates that we got from the Division of Local Services from the Department of Revenue estimate that like a couple of years ago, if we had implemented this, we would have collected about $15,000. You know, the world's changing with COVID. We don't know what the collection amount would be, but we thought it was worth doing. And this is an example of the Finance Committee and town employees trying to find ways to, you know, this isn't a big ticket item, but it's another example of how we're trying to find ways to generate revenue that aren't residential property taxes. And let me go to some of this questions. So Michelle Bailey said, will the meals tax apply to meals at Gordon? There are, it will apply to meals at Gordon. There are some exemptions. I don't think it covers students. But Gordon, you know, when we looked at estimates of collections in the past, there was some revenue flow coming from Gordon. Um, purchasing meals at the seminary? Is that the Gordon Conwell Seminary, which is in Hamilton?
That's in, I think that's in, I think that's located in Hamilton.
That's in Hamilton. Will this action deter potential restaurants from opening in Wenham? I don't think so. It hasn't. And the roughly 241 other towns in Massachusetts that have implemented the local meals tax, and it's such a minute increase to the existing state tax that already exists for all restaurants. Does anyone, also, I should just note that the Finance Committee and the Board of Select all recommended favorable action to adopt this. Does anyone have any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Sure.
You know, I just wanted to point that out.
Excuse me.
Sorry, Jim.
Paul Weaver is here. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, can we just do Article Six? It'll only take a moment, I think. And then we'll go back to the other ones. Is that, is that acceptable? Okay, similar to Article Five, I'll read this one. It's a adoption of an additional percentage tax on room occupancy. It reads, "To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 64G, Section 3A, authorizing the imposition of a local excise on the rental of rooms and hotels, motels, lodging, BMBs within the town, and further to set that local excise at 6%." So currently, the the occupancy tax is set at 5.7%. It would increase by three tenths of a percent. 203 communities out of 351 in the Commonwealth have adopted this. And again, it is no, no costs to the Town of Wenham to implement this. The state will collect this money and return return 30 cents on $100 spent, whatever that amounts to. We didn't come up with a rounded or projected calculation for this amount, but again, it's at no expense, if you will, to the Town of Wenham, but just another opportunity to garner a few extra dollars in in state revenue. Article Six, are there operating rentals in town that this would be subject to? Would this apply? I didn't see the whole thing. Would that apply to what?
Is Jim? Would it apply to Airbnbs is the end of the question?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it would. Yes, it would apply to Airbnbs, yes. Yeah. Any other thoughts or comments by FinCom or questions? Would the Airbnb need a license from the town? I believe they do. Isn't that right, Anthony?
Well, they need their normal licenses, but as far as for this, for this purpose with rooms, the answer is no.
No.
It's the same as the meals tax. It's just something that they would notify the Airbnb or short-term renter. It was actually signed into law last July by Governor Baker, so. Yeah, so there's is just looking at the next question. Do we have any?
Operating licenses at this time for rentals? I I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
I'm I'm not sure what the permitted is for right now. I don't know, Jackie, if you happen to know. Are they permitted for anything right now?
So we require in Wenham, and Margaret Hoffman from the Planning Office is online in case I don't say this correctly. So we require a special permit for beds and breakfasts, but for Airbnb, because of the governor's law, we don't, we didn't need to enact a local bylaw. We had had one proposed a few years ago. Folks that are coming to town meeting regularly might remember, we had one proposed that was tabled. But because of the governor's legislation, there's no local action needed for Airbnb the way there is for a special permitted bed and breakfast. So Margaret, feel free to speak up if I said that incorrectly, but that's, I believe, where we stand right now on those.
Does the public health, our local public health department have any role in an Airbnb oversight?
Um, not at this time. Once you get into the B and B, bread and bed and breakfast market, there's some food code that is applicable, but it's separate from the restaurant code, at least under Food Code 23.
Thanks, Jackie.
Very welcome, Jim.
Okay, anything else on Article Six? If not, we can move to Article Article Three with Mr. Weaver.
Thanks, Jim. Um, let me, I think, I apologize to everybody for having woofed on the schedule, but I got down a different rabbit hole this afternoon. Just barely came up, and we had a, something else happening in the house here at seven. The, my, Jackie's commentary makes clear that this is, wherever, the commentary's not here, but the commentary makes clear that this is simply a translation in form. It's not a change in substance. And my concern, which I discussed last night with Tony, is that, at least for based on my experience as moderator, the the one thing that's important is people need to understand, is something changing? And if it's changing, why is it changing? And we need to understand what it is. And so my remarks, as presently drafted, and they need to be condensed and refocused a bit, is to say that this is the last ministerial step in a long process evolving that really began with back when the town administrator position was established as a result of a town government study committee and a number of other things. And then the last town government study committee that I was involved with produced the bylaw amendments that were adopted, I think, in at the annual town meeting in 2016, which provided that which had previously not existed, which was a reporting relationship among the selectmen and the elected town boards and the town administrator. And 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 so once that was passed, and I would kick it to Diane to jump in and do this, but I give her total credit on this. We said, okay, Diane, here it is. We've adopted the bylaw. We've updated it. I actually went to the selectmen and asked them to let me update the legal base study, which I was given in 1978 when I joined as town council and used repeatedly throughout my years to answer questions that people had about who could do what to whom. But as we passed bylaw changes and bylaw changes, there were changes in external law. It became harder and harder to figure out exactly how to do stuff. I had it in my head, but I was worried upon retirement that that it would be not easily accessible to the town once I was no longer around to provide it. And so we, the selectmen backed me, and we brought on a person named Melanie Giaccoloni, who who worked in town hall for a while after this project to update the legal base study. We went back through every bylaw, every bylaw change, every town meeting vote from 1978 on, and to make sure that we got rid of the stuff that had become obsolete. We'd added in the stuff that had been adopted in the meantime and and got it all into a sensible order in the format of the original 1978 legal base study. So it was a copy edit of that. And then we sent it to Diane, says, here, post it on the website. And that that Diane took a look at it and said, holy mackerel, this is way, way beyond our in-house capability here. And she did some research and discovered this firm called General Code, whose business. And there are at least two firms I know, General Code, and there's another one. General Code tends to specialize in smaller towns, but their job, basically, their business is to convert and maintain municipal ordinances or or charters or or bylaws, whatever you want to call them. And as we looked into it, it said, this is clearly what we need because it will make the Wenham's town government document, now now called, I think, an ordinance, searchable. It's organized sequentially. It's possible then to do an amendment to add something or amend something very obviously. And and people, both town staff and individual voters, members, residents can look in if they want to know what the rules about swimming pools are. You search for swimming pools, you're going to be able to find it all all by yourself. So it's a pretty good thing. It does involve an ongoing sort of platform maintenance license from General Code, but they were, I thought, remarkably inexpensive in terms of what it costs to actually do all this. And they, in the process, they double-checked that all of our documents against current law, we had, and there was a committee Diane and I and Jackie and Margaret were on, and town administrator was before. And we had several meetings and got this thing to a point in time. We sent it to town council at Copelman and Page, and Lauren Goldberg, who was the town council at that time for us, and who is the Massachusetts expert on this kind of stuff. Took it under advisement, but she's the managing partner of the firm, and basically, it took almost three years to get her to read it and comment. But a year ago, January, we had another meeting. She came. We went all the way through the thing. We agreed on the edits and then reactivated General Code. They needed a year to get it back into their schedule. And it, but it was ready for the annual town meeting in April, but obviously was deferred in the interest of the brevity of the meeting and the height of the pandemic. So that's, that's the context of this, and my remarks will be to try to concise. And my remarks will be to try to concisely explain that this is a result of a long and careful process that has been reviewed and reviewed at numerous levels. And that at this point in time, what we, what we're doing here with this article and the next one, which is just part of it, but has to be a separate article because it involves the same copy editing of the zoning bylaws. And that requires, under state law, the planning board to have weighed in on that part. But the two, the two together will convert our old paper stuff into an electronic platform that's updatable, searchable and all that stuff. I think the, um, I'm just. I forget. I know, I know whether Diane or Margaret remembers. I have it in my mind that this, assuming town meeting votes this, it, it may require some further steps at, in, in Boston to get it finally approved. Is anybody remember about that? If not, that we'll have to, I'll have to try to nail that down before.
Yeah. Um, Paul, excuse me, this is Margaret. Once the, um, the town meeting votes on zoning bylaw changes, we then send it to the attorney general's office for.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but, 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 but should we say we're able to do this because of the way it's been done and, and the expertise of General Code? We don't have to go to the legislature on this one?
No, we do not. Just a bylaw change through the attorney general's office. Sorry, this is.
Great. Um, and, and I think this has been fairly carefully considered such that it should not be a problem with the attorney general's office. We certainly don't expect that. We, and we really haven't done anything, um, radical at all with this. And I will say, going all the way back to the town government study committee and the legal base study, everyone was very aware of the fact that there were certain traditions in Wenham. And we wanted to maintain, if you will, use the term, Harriet would like this, the Wenham way. Uh, but we had a certain way we did things. We wanted, for example, uh, to maintain the autonomy of these independent elected boards and offices, but, but make sure that they all were plugged in in a certain way. And the example I always use is the assessors are responsible for the assessing. They were before, they still are and will be. The difference is before, if they wanted to hire, uh, an assessing assistant, they could, and we had instances in the past where they just said, okay, we're going to get somebody's brother in here to do it. They said, no, the town administrator is responsible. The town has a responsibility to do hiring in accordance with applicable law of, of anti-discrimination. So we're then, there's certain processes we have to do to protect ourselves. So it needed to be clear for everybody that the hiring had to be done in the Wenham town way and the town administrator is responsible for that. So all of the different areas were sort of sorted through to make sure that the separate policy things would continue to be honor the distributed separately elected appointed boards, but that, that the whole was connected together in a way and, and in a way that everyone could understand, you know, who had, who had authority for what. And so that's, that's the principal thing here is to clarify the fact that it's all one town. It has various departments, has people in charge of various departments, but it's all going to operate as one unified organization. So, um, from my point of view, I had a lot of sleepless nights over my many years trying to figure out, you know, to use an example that Harriet and I would remember is, you know, who, who can close town hall in the event of a snowstorm on Friday afternoon? I mean, we went around and around on that when it actually happened. And, uh, so the answer is now there's ways to know that stuff. So, so anyway, that's the background for this. And, and I will introduce it, obviously, Margaret or Diane or whoever else will, Jackie, hopefully will all be there if there are questions that I've forgotten or in technical details that, that you all have been handling on the staff side. Please be there to help Tony not get the questions answered, but hopefully, I know I was asked actually several years ago to come and show up sort of as a talisman in the hopes that at least some people remember, remember and respect my word and that it may help comp and make people assure them that this is not some, some, as I say, some radical change, but simply an improvement in the quality of life. I, I say at the end of my talk, I said, well, let's imagine that we, the town laws were all written in Old English. And by now, almost nobody in town speaks Old English anymore, and we need to translate it into modern form and put it up, uh, on the website so everybody can actually understand it and work with it. And that's, that's basically what this is, simply a translation into a more modern platform.
Paul, we do have a question coming in for the chat. So we have a question regarding, is there any remaining cost associated with this Article three? So just to speak to something you haven't touched on is that there will be a small IT cost that we've incorporated into the operating budget for the, um, General Code will host a copy of our code online that folks can use as a reference. It's very searchable and user-friendly online. So it's one of the benefits of having used this, uh, company is that we have a searchable code accessible online that they will update for us regularly, um, so that we maintain our new formatting going forward. So I just wanted to make sure, unless there's, that was the only question in the chat, though. I just wanted to let you know.
Well, thank you. And that's, that's, that's a good point. It, it, the costs of this have been known and anticipated. Um, and I, I think they were folded back in after the sort of three-year hiatus while we were waiting on town council and so forth. But, you know, we've had, uh, well, almost coming on now, well, more than a year and a half since the new, since we were, put it back in, in go to get this done. So I, I, I do remember the discussion about making sure we provided in the budget for any, uh, any additional fees to General Code to sort of get the thing in final form. And after that, it's no different than any other license you basically have to pay. It's an annual maintenance for, to use their platform. And what it means is that as laws and bylaws change at future town meetings, it'll be very easy for Diane to report them to General Code and they'll roll it in. And so that the, the website ordinance, if you will, or the code, um, will be able to be current and correct, which, uh, is, has never been the case with respect to our bylaws in the past.
Paul, what is the cost of doing this? Of what's, what's General Code's bill look like?
General Code's, um, original bid, correct me, oh, this is the committee, wrong. I thought it was $8,000. Now, this is, we're going back to 2016 or something like that. But we had it when, when we considered this, it went to the selectmen, so the $8,000. And that has been paid and it, maybe there has been some additional costs because of the delay, the stop-start aspects of it, but it was an $8,000 fee. It may have been topped off to some extent. But it's a flat fee and that, and at the end of the, at the end of the contract, what's in it for General Code is they then get the platform fees going forward. And, and they had a, a team of people who put in, I suspect, hundreds of hours in accomplishing all the changes and the conversions and everything. It, it is their platform. They had the pre-existing platform. It's used by many other cities and towns, but mostly towns, who are similar to us. So it's, it's a tried and true platform. And, but it's still required, as I say, taking all the old historic Wenham stuff and converting it into this format. And it has the format you look at. If you look at the general laws in Massachusetts, you know, it begins with 1.1.0, you know, goes through and 2.0, 3.0. We've got that same numbering system here so that, uh, it's, it's easy to find things. You don't have to flip through all the annual town meeting records to find out whether or not anything was amended. It'll show you right off the bat whether it's, whatever the current law will be, will always be available.
And approximately, how much will the annual cost be going forward?
I, I never, I never was not involved in that, so I don't, as I say, I, I think it's a fairly modest amount. But, uh, I hesitate this. I, I, I would throw out a number, but I have no basis for that number at all, other than it's a faint recollection.
So we don't know how much this will cost per year after this is done?
I don't know. Anthony, do you, do you have an idea? Or is there anybody can check the budget on that?
Diane, do, would you happen to have an answer to that question?
I actually don't remember. Off the top of my head, I can check on that tomorrow. It wasn't, it was a minimal annual fee.
Was it a thousand dollars around there? Or is it even that high?
I don't even think it was that high. I think we actually, it's, it easily, it didn't even make a, a dent. I don't even think we brought it up with FinCom. It didn't affect the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was very minimal.
Yeah. Whoever can check it tomorrow, if you email it to me, I'll roll it into my remarks, the final draft of my remarks. So we'll pre-answer the question.
Thank you.
To Susan.
Paul, I, if, excuse me just for a second, I do want to make sure that we address, there's another question in the chat, uh, based on something that came up in the spring. So there's a question regarding this spring that was brought to the town's attention that there was a change in the town meeting date and the election date. However, it was never written into the bylaws. Has that been updated? So Anthony, do you want to speak to what the selectman did for the procedure for changing the town meeting for next year in May? And how that that's not a permanent change? Can you speak to that? With, I don't think I see anyone from the BLS.
Yeah, there was a, what was it, the holiday that would have normally fell on, um, when town meeting was, and then, uh, we looked at it and the best available day was that May 1st, um, and then the election was the May 6th. So, and that worked for Hamilton as well.
That's the question, though.
Oh, sorry.
The question is, this spring, there was a lot of discussion about when the town meeting and the election could be. And I brought forward to you that at a town meeting, a citizen's petition had been approved, that those would be changed. And then you said we didn't have to abide by those because they weren't written into the bylaws.
Right. So it's not addressed in this special town meeting. It's something that can be codified into the bylaws for the annual town meeting. But I think for the annual town meeting, the selectmen took the vote to have it, uh, to be consistent with what was, uh, agreed upon at a previous town meeting.
And then my other question, which was a little bit earlier, is earlier this summer, there was a big discussion about signs and signs being in the bylaws and not being allowed to be in certain places. And, um, then the selectmen said, no, that wasn't the case. They weren't going to enforce the bylaw and that there'd be some update and they actually invited a residence to come and work with them on that. Did that happen or is that in this?
So, no, that's not going to be addressed at this special town meeting. This special town meeting was really for the purpose of just completing the business of the annual town meeting. So anything new, uh, would be worked on for the annual town meeting. So nothing's been completed or nothing's been assembled yet as far as any working groups or anything like that. Michelle.
Thanks.
And Articles, Articles three and four, by definition or by intent, it, it is not changing anything such as a sign bylaw. There's a sign bylaw already existing. It is what it is. It's been translated into the code, but it's not changed. But going forward, it will be much easier to implement any changes that are wanted. And obviously the selectmen have this sort of, the gatekeepers on the articles that would make any such changes.
Uh, so Paul, just to wrap up quickly on Articles three and four, Margaret did note that the General Code Maintenance Agreement on an annual basis is $995. So Anthony, you were right, just under a thousand.
Good memory.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Margaret. Um, but, um, did anyone else have any other questions for Paul?
I would just like to thank Paul for your continued work on this. It's, it's very much appreciated.
Well, thank, thank, you're very kind to say that, Jim. It's a, it's a thing, when you do something for 40 years, it sort of becomes a part of you. And I really didn't want to, uh, I enjoyed every minute, well, pretty much every minute of those 40 years, but, and I just felt I owed it back to the town to take whatever expertise I developed on this. And, and having lived through a lot of frictions about the ambiguities in our old bylaws and just, you know, as you know, we're a pre-charter town so that the ability to have clarified, updated our stuff was never very easy for us. And, um, so, uh, it, it was important to me to try to put it right because I, I appreciated the frustration of both staff and, and town residents to try to get answers to things. And I understood how expensive it would be if you had to get it from Copelman and Page instead of me. So, uh, anyway, that's, that, that was my commitment was that it's sort of a capstone thing for me. And it, it really completes a 10-year process, uh, on my end to sort of do the, do the lifting and build consensus to get this done and then get it funded. So this is really the last, the last ministerial piece.
Thanks, thanks again, Paul.
You're welcome. See you guys on Saturday.
Can I just be sure about the, um, because Article four is a zoning bylaw amendment, I think, I'm sure we need two-thirds. What about three? Do we need a two-thirds for, vote for, um, Article three?
Just a simple majority, Tony, for a general bylaw amendment.
Good, good point.
I think it's important to point out as well that the, uh, planning board on Article four, uh, voted five, five zero to support the, uh, changes in the bylaw. I guess I'm, I continue to host this, so I'll move forward. Any other questions from, or for Paul? All right. On we go to Article seven. Let's see. Article six. He's, who has this one? Jackie, easement for National Grid on the town of Wenham property.
We have, uh, Ken Whitaker on Zoom, representing the Conservation Commission.
Great. Ken?
Yeah, yeah, I'll proceed. Thank you. This is a fairly straightforward matter. Uh, it's a request that the town provide an easement to National Grid to install a power line and a power pole on the edge of the Reynolds Farm property over near the railroad tracks. The food project is out there right now. They are upgrading their facilities, building more permanent buildings and so forth. And they just want to electrify their center of operations out there. So this is merely, uh, providing them a long-term easement to get power out there so they can do what they want to do. And that's it.
Okay. Has anyone reached out to the food project to make them aware? Jill, uh, has a question on that. Will that interfere with the use of that field in any way?
Well, no, they're, they're actually the ones that had requested it. Uh, they've been in front of the Conservation Commission several times and we've assessed, uh, in, in great detail what they're proposing to do, uh, which primarily consists of upgrading their facilities out there and make them far more attractive. So the commission is very much in favor of this.
Great. Any other comments?
Did get another, there, we did get another question in the chat. Will the driveway entering the food project need to move? Ken, Ken, can you speak to that?
No, I don't. I, I, I don't believe so. I don't think there's any plans on there to, to relocate that. It's, it's, uh, you know, merely running a line and a power pole, so I don't believe that's going to impact the driveway at all.
Uh, Ken, another question in the chat. Would this positively or negatively affect the food project's operations?
Oh, it would help it. It would, but it would help it to do a number of things, but, uh, most notably allow them to be a little bit more efficient, but also gives them a better reason to upgrade their facilities. If you drive by right now, their existing facilities are a little shabby, quite frankly, with tents and so forth. Uh, they're going to build a more permanent facility that will be far more attractive. So it's a big help to their operations. Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ken. There was another question. Anthony? Anthony, A?
Yep, I'm here.
Did you have a comment? Uh, I saw something come up at the bottom of the screen.
Just at the end, Jim, if you want me to just go on an overview of what, uh, the residents can expect at town meeting.
Oh, great.
Up and, and voting and so forth, just some changes that they'll see.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, a summary of that would be very helpful. Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Okay, Article eight, citizen petition. Let's see, this is, from a three-member board to a five-member board, uh, to be elected for three-year terms, I think. Patrick, uh, what else? Patrick?
Yes. So this, this.
Are, are going to speak to this one, Pat?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Uh, so fairly simple. It's a one-word change to our, uh, So fairly simple. It's a one-word change to our bylaws, just changing the Board of Selectmen from a three-member board to a five-member board. This will be a non-binding question. The, the, the intent was to actually make the change, but we have to go through a charter commission government study to actually propose it and then get it to town meeting. So this will be purely informational. The vote will be to gauge the interest of the, the town, whether or not to move forward to increase the, the board from, from three to five. And just shared workload, greater constituency, just really easy stuff. We have a more engaged populace. We've got people interested in, in, in becoming joining the board. So I think the, the time is right. And strangely, we have a joint meeting of the, the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, yet there are no selectmen here. It, it speaks to the potential need for, for more people to be involved, I, I believe.
What, what would the citizen, Pat, what would the citizens at the special town meeting actually be voting, voting on? Is it, I wasn't clear about that.
So they will be, they will be voting whether or not they, the, the vote itself is purely symbolic. So it, it's more sending a message to the, the Board of Selectmen to form. It, it, there is no, it's non-binding. So there's nothing that the town has to do, but it'd be more of a, an indication of interest in increasing the board from three to five members. To, and I, I would hope it would spur a, a study committee to, to study the issue and come back with a report and say either three, three or five, which one would be better suited to, to Wenham.
It, this is in, I would call it in the nature of a straw poll. It was a frustration of mine over the years that the selectmen had no way of knowing, other than anecdotally with individual people, sort of what the town's feeling might be on a change of, of any kind like this. So that, and, and actually a couple of times I think I did sneak in a raise your hands kind of thing to, so the selectmen could look at there's a lot of support or there's no support for something. But I, I felt that's an important thing. So in this case, I, I think of this as, as non-binding, simply has the effect of showing whether or not there's a, a majority, at least of the people who show up to vote in the change or not. And that may justify going forward or may justify trying to stay with where we are and you know.
So I've seen a few, I've seen a few questions regarding, is this a two-thirds or a majority? I think, Paul, that, that's helpful for you as you've described it as a straw vote. I think it's, there's nothing contingent on a two-thirds or a majority. It's just given a message. Is that a fair interpretation?
I think that's right. And I, I kick it to Tony. If it were me, this might be a case in which, I mean, shall we say the moderator has the ability to look at the hands raised? We do, assuming this is a hand, you know, voter card vote. You know, you look at it and the moderator says, okay, I'm pretty certain that the eyes or the nays have it. In this particular case, it might be useful to actually quantify the vote. I don't, I leave to others whether that's the case and whether Tony wants to try to do a, a count, a teller count or not. That, that takes more time.
I can address someone out at the end about as far as how we're going to vote. It's all part of the, the final overview, Paul. We, we.
Good.
So, so whether, whether or not this passes is, again, it's just sending a message. So there is, I don't think there's any need for a two-thirds because there's no, nothing is incumbent upon the town if this were to pass with just a simple majority. It would just be, again, a, a measure of interest for, for townspeople.
Pat, can I address one quick thing?
Sure.
Sorry, I just, I do think that the two-thirds was actually referring to the prior article regarding the easement for the food project. So just for clarity for folks, food project article, the easement for the Concom, that because it's having to do with land use requires a two-thirds majority. And then this is the straw poll for the citizen as it's non-binding. But I just wanted to make that clear for folks watching at home, that the food project easement with National Grid is two-thirds majority. Sorry to interrupt.
And.
That makes sense, yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask the question, if we're going to be doing, and if we're going to be doing voting electronically in some fashion, and if there are no problems that arise from that, will we not have a very specific number for each vote? Or am I wrong about that?
Yeah, well, I can, I can explain, Tony, how that, the answer is yes, we'll know a specific number. And yes, we'll know if we met the requirements of the two-thirds in that previous article that we were addressing, that, that's the software. All that. So I can explain all of that at the end. And then take questions after that, might be.
Patrick, do you have any other further comments?
No, I, I look forward to, to, to seeing what the, the town says.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Article 9, a second citizens petition. Who has that article?
Dan Pascarella's on, who can speak?
Oh, okay, Dan. Thank you.
Hi, Jim, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
So Jim, the, the origin of this article has to do with the local metrics that the Joint Boards of Health adopted at the end of August for the opening and operation of schools in the district. Back on August 26th, the Joint Boards adopted some local metrics that were actually more stringent than what the state had implemented through DESI, DPH. And what happened was due to the standards that the local boards had adopted, Hamilton and Wenham were actually redefined into what turned out to be a red category. And on September 3rd, the superintendent issued a press release that based on these local metrics, the school district was forced to shut down from its proposed hybrid model to a fully remote model for at least a period of three weeks. Since we introduced these, these petitions, and, and there's a sister petition in Hamilton that reads virtually identically except for the, the town name. But since we introduced those, we had a number of very productive meetings with both the Boards of Health and the superintendent. And I'm happy to announce we're actually able to reach a resolution of this, which is that both Boards of Health have since repealed their previous votes to adopt these local metrics. So these were first adopted on August 26th. There was a slight change made on September 14th, but they were largely reaffirmed on September 14th. On October 1, the Hamilton Board voted to repeal and restate their guidance. On October 7th, the Wenham Board voted to repeal and restate their guidance to clarify that these metrics are not a mandate and they are not in order to the school district, that the school districts are not, the school district is not obligated to follow any of this guidance and that the school district is not obligated to deviate from guidance issued by DESI or DPH. So we're very happy with that result. We, we very much appreciate the time that the Board, the Boards of Health and also the town managers, Anthony's been part of these meetings, so has Joe D'Amello, it's in, in Hamilton, as well as the, the Board of Selectmen in Hamilton. So we, we think we've actually solved this, that we're going to recommend actually that we don't need to take action on, on the petition because of the resolution that we reached. And I know that if you now go to the guidance in the metrics on both the Hamilton website and the Wenham website, you will see clear disclosures on both the narrative document and on the metrics, two-page chart document that states exactly what, what I just mentioned, that these are not mandates or orders. They're just optional guidance for the school district and for the superintendent. So that's where we are. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, one quick question, if I may, as it relates to the special town meeting. I understand, Dan, that this was designed to inform and solicit kind of a, a, a vote on behalf of the, of town meeting in, in like a, in a non-binding sense. Since the resolution's been reached, there's maybe less of a, a fo, still a continued focus on educating as to the issue at hand. But perhaps initially there would have been more of a response sought from the school committee and/or administration. And I was wondering if either, up, up until this time, or I guess it was October 7th, when Wenham followed Hamilton's lead in, in changing the Board of Health guidance, was there an expectation that the superintendent and/or school committee members would be in a position to respond or, or ask to respond? And then is it, is it, was that the case and is it still going forward? Whereby, given, given these more recent developments, we may not be taking a vote. I hope, I hope that's clear. So by basically the short, short version is, will, will we hear from the admin, the administration to your knowledge?
Well, so with respect to the timeline, one of the first meetings that we had, I'm trying to remember exactly what the date was. I was before the Wenham Board of Selectmen, I think right after we had the signature certified in Wenham and we received a number of questions. The very next day, we had, and by we, I mean, the sponsor in Hamilton is, is Bill Heaney. And just for point of reference, there were, there were about 125 signatures submitted in Wenham and 180 or so submitted at Hamilton. And we had a, a meeting with Superintendent Banyos on, I think it was the 23rd of September, which was the day after the Board of Selectmen meeting. And that, that was a very productive meeting. We, we tried to point out for the superintendent that there were a host of unintended consequences that could have come from this guidance where we understood that the, the Boards of Health were indicating that they intended this to be optional, but the way that the documents read, they were actually framed as mandatory metrics for, for the school. So yes, with respect to participation by the superintendent, she, she was involved. And the solution that we proposed was something that she thought was, was something that would work. And, and actually she was involved with speaking with the Boards of Health as well. So we, we haven't had any, other than input from, I think Michelle had some input during one of the Board of Select meetings, but we haven't had any formal meetings with the school committee itself. But we did have direct participation and, and meetings with the superintendent.
Thanks, Dan.
So, Dan, this article, by the way, I, I see it's Article 7 on the, on the slide here. It's, it should be changed to Article 9, I believe. So Dan, is this article going to continue to be actually as part of the, as, as part of the special town meeting or is it going to be retracted? Or is it an opportunity for you to talk about what you've presented here and the process you went through, this cooperative working back and forth process to get to an agreeable position?
Yeah, so Jim, my understanding is that since this, the signatures were certified, we can't actually take it off the warrant. This was something that we did discuss. I, I, I think it was first proposed by Hamilton that if we were able to reach a resolution, were we going to insist on pushing this forward for a vote? And, you know, would we recommend no action? So that was part of our discussions with, with the towns. It's an interesting question because I know that Copeland and Page has provided a legal opinion in which they think that this would be a non-binding resolution because you can't, you can't infringe upon the Board of Health's statutory authority. The interesting question here though is that because of the intersection of the Board of Health in the school committee, it wasn't clear that the Board of Health had the authority to do this in the first place. So they, they certainly have the authority to take steps to protect the towns against infectious disease. But to the extent that this waded into the school districts and the superintendent's jurisdiction, it, I think there's still an open question as to how much of this would be binding or non-binding. But since they've, since both boards have repealed their previous votes, there's a mootness question to this at this point. I, I, but, you know, harkening back to what your previous conversation was, I mean, it, it, it could certainly provide sort of a straw poll. I mean, the sentiment is strong out there about trying to keep the schools open and getting the kids back into the classroom. So I'm, I'm sure there's a number of people who, who would like to speak to it. But in terms of the drafters of the petitions, we, we think that it's been solved because this was directed at the Boards of Health and the Boards of Health have clarified their positions. And really going forward, this is a matter for the attention to be focused on the school committee and, and the superintendent.
I just saw a note here from Michelle, a vote would be helpful for getting a sense of the community. So it's a.
And I, I think it's right. And I, and I'm happy to, you know, provide the context for this and I was planning to on, on Saturday.
Anthony, Anthony for Harry? I guess, I guess my question was this would be a straw vote, a quote straw vote process once again.
Right. I, I mean, I think we'd be in the same, just as Paul Weaver described it, it would be, you know, informing, and now here, I, it's not like we're informing the selectmen. I think we're just informing everyone about what the, you know, what the views of the town are. And it, for such as, you know, for such purposes as that's useful. So I, I don't have an objection to it and I can't imagine, you know, if we can't take, if we can't, you know, just take it, take the warrant down, then, then I think there'd be an explanation, some brief discussion. And so long as the, the mood of the town didn't have people exiting the doors once, uh, once they learn that the, you know, that this matter had been resolved, let's, you know, let's get a vote.
I think, I think the proponents of the petition probably have the right to make whatever motion they want. And so they could move to take no action, but then we do it, just do it as a straw poll. It's a, it's a miracle to me, what Anthony's describing or is about to describe to us, that if we have electronic counting going on, think of all the time was lost over the times that I was moderator, we waiting for the tellers to go around and count all cards and so forth. And so having it precise counts is a very, very quick and easy way to get that sort of data. So whether it's, whether it's after a straw poll, after a motion to take no action, or whether it's a, to proceed to the motion to, to take a vote for informing people, then either way works for me.
So we'll move forward with the article. Dan, you'll do an explanation. We'll, as I'm hearing it, we'll take a straw vote on, on Article 1 of prohibited BOH from adopting et cetera, et cetera. Is that, is that correct where we would go in this? I just want to be clear for all of us, I guess, yeah. Okay, Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions to Dan on Article, Article 9? Okay, Anthony A. You have a, Anthony?
Yes.
A summary of where we are and what's going to happen Saturday morning.
Jim, I can always be Tony, okay?
Okay, you be Tony. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, that's what we did so successfully the last time, Tony, right? We identified it that way. All right. All right. So again, just for reminders, Saturday is a rain or shine event. Check-in starts at nine o'clock. Town meeting will start at 10 o'clock. Everybody should have their books mailed to them by now. And Jackie, do you have the map, just so we can just show the layout?
You shall see it in a moment.
Yeah, I just emailed it to you. So everybody should expect basically the same thing that you saw at the annual town meeting. Town meeting will be at Pingree Park. There'll be parking on the field and off to the side for those that need special accommodations. The air will be, the tent is, is smaller than what you saw the last time. This tent is only 100 by 140 only, and it can accommodate max was 284 people. I don't expect that as the selectmen at their previous. I don't expect that, as the selectmen at their previous meeting, they voted to lower the quorum for this meeting to 90. So, that will be the quorum that only stands for this town meeting. Everything else remains the same. We'll have the first aid tent. Our ambulance and fire department will be there. The police department will be providing the traffic flow and also any type of security there that we need. We'll also have parking at the library, too. So, now talking about what's going to be different, the main difference at this town meeting is that we, the selectmen approved us purchasing electronic voting devices. And they're probably about as big as your cellphone. And what it is, is there's, yeah, there's buttons on it, and yes, no. Yes, no. And what'll be displayed for this meeting, there'll be a screen or a TV, which will show how the voting summary is happening as it happens. So, you're right, Paul, to your point, a lot of town meetings, when you have to go to a paper ballot for some reason, that can take up where, maybe an hour to do that. This now is seconds. It's all done on a radio frequency between the device that is held in your hand and a device that's attached to a standalone laptop that is not connected to the internet. So, there's no security issues there. We'll have test questions that we will run through before town meeting starts, just so everybody is comfortable. There's a little LCD screen that, excuse me, there's an LCD screen that'll let you know that your vote has been accepted. And let's see, what else? And it will tell us when, if a simple majority is what it programmed in for that town meeting article, it will let us know that we've reached majority, or in the case of the two-thirds, that we've met the two-thirds requirement. So, happy to answer any questions that anybody may have with regards to town meeting.
Anthony, we did get a question in the chat. Can you speak to this question? Seems like this electronic voting could be a secret ballot. Does the Assembly have to approve that type of secret balloting at the beginning of the meeting?
I would say no, they do not have to approve it. It's just like if you were going to a paper ballot, that is a secret ballot. And this, for the first meeting, there is always the option that you could display how everybody votes on a screen. It just wouldn't be legible, because if you had 200 people, you'd just be looking at these small little boxes and you really couldn't read. But we would have the documentation on how people have voted, in that they voted on a particular question.
There's no other questions in the chat at this point, no other questions?
Michelle, to answer your other question, we'll go through, and we have our pre-meeting with town council, Tony. Maybe that's just another thing that we may want to ask them, is if that has to be approved or just mentioned at town, at town meeting?
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate question, because it does, it certainly is close to, and maybe it is a secret ballot, in the sense that, you know, people aren't standing up. You can't see, your neighbor can't see what you're voting for. So, but, well, I think it should be put to town council, and maybe the safe thing will be for us to vote, to approve electronic voting, so.
And Tony, just to add to that, what's interesting is that while it does have the, on the surface, the appearance of anonymity, because you're holding a little credit card key fob down by your side, rather than raising your hands, in our previous discussions, when we first talked about this, the results are actually not being anonymized and being transmitted back, but actually are trackable back to the holder, back to the resident, who has registered, if you will, the device under their name and address when checking it out, for purposes of keeping track of these, presumably, in part. But I think that does raise the other question of now we have a record, an electronic record of everyone's actual voting, you know, pattern, or the vote that they cast at town meeting, which arguably, though public via voter card, was not really retained or captured in the same way. So, I think that we should just be, and I would urge Anthony in the select board to be cautious as to, you know, what information is, although it flips back and forth, it appears entirely anonymous, that which is retained in the laptop, basically. Because you could have 100% accountability, vote by vote, resident by resident. And that is certainly a break from the tradition of town meeting, whereby it's whoever you see and recall is one thing. That's all. Just want to throw that out there to keep in mind. It's certainly not FinCon purview, but.
Anthony, is this the same system that they had, shall we say, some problems with in Hamilton, or?
No, Hamilton is, has purchased it with us. So, we went in on this purchase together, and it wasn't using any town funds, by the way. It was funds, the KIAZAC funds that paid for this. So, I, before we even purchased, and it was all included in the selectmen's packet, and I encourage folks to go review that packet, because there was emails in there from several other communities that have used this, this process, and had nothing but rave reviews by those towns.
But, forgive me, but didn't Hamilton have some problems with electronic voting the last, their last town meeting?
Problem was, is that they didn't have, I think they didn't have enough devices. They were going to test it, Tony. Yeah, you're right. They were going to test it. They didn't have enough devices, so therefore, they had to go to the old method. So, what you, what we would be doing is both. You would be still getting the paddle and that, and you would also be getting the electronic device. Because in the event that we weren't able, for some reason, to successfully work the device, then we would go back to the secondary or the primary means of voting is what we've been accustomed to in the past. So.
I have just a quick, Tony, just to reaffirm a procedural question. Tony, for the finance articles, you'll be reading the article like you did at the last town meeting, and we'll be just moving the article. Is that correct?
I want, that's what I would think I would do. However, when I was doing that, then our town council indicated that that wasn't necessary. I think that's the best way of doing it. But that's, so that's, that, so that is the way that I will propose that it be done, where I read it, and then we don't need it twice, if you will.
Right. Is this finance, any of the FinCon members have any other comments on that? We did it that way at the last meeting. It seemed to work okay.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, no comments. I thought it worked great last time.
Okay. Okay, Tony. Thank you.
Okay.
Anthony, are you, are you, Anthony A.?
Yes.
Are you wrapped up with your, with the comments on the town meeting for Saturday?
Yeah, I am. I don't see any other questions. It's.
Anthony, there was one question in the chat that went unanswered. Just would the raw data, voting data be made available to the public?
So, I'll have to get clarification on that from council.
Okay, so that's a TBD, but we could put an answer to that up on the website, maybe, before the meeting?
Yes.
And I think Mr. Waddell, Pat Waddell has some comments that he'd like to.
Yes, please. So, I'm just on, thank you. I'm on the Secretary of State's website, and they do address secret ballots, and very short, secret ballots. When voters vote by secret ballot, it's determined by a town's bylaws. In some towns, the moderator can call for a secret ballot. In some towns, if a certain number of voters request it, a vote will be by secret ballot. In other towns, a vote will be by secret ballot if 25% of the voters present and voting ask for it. So, I think we can go secret ballot. It just has to go before town meeting.
Well, it has to be asked, right? Pat, could you repeat that again? Is it asked by the town or asked by the boards?
It's unclear. The moderator can request it. Or 25% of the residents can request it. So, I would say, in our case, Tony can ask for it, as long as 25% of the people acquiesce, we're fine.
Yeah, Paul, do you want to weigh in on this, Paul Weaver?
But just to say it, the town meeting time addresses that specifically. My recollection is that over the years, one, we were sort of against it because of the logistics and the delays, because there was, for everyone who wanted it secret, there were people who just wanted to get it over and go home. So, we, I tended to discourage it, but, and therefore, I always required that there be a motion, and I think it was two-thirds, but it may not have been. It's set forth in town meeting time, and it may be something in the bylaws about it. I don't know that I even still have bylaws with me, but, yeah. But I mean, we can sort that out by then. There's certainly, if town council advises you guys before then, that it's not a secret ballot, the way the electronic stuff would work, and obviously, if the electronic stuff failed, it would be the same old card, visual card count that we have. In my view, that wouldn't be a secret ballot. And secret would be to obscure the identity of the people. So, technically, their identity is linked to their votes by the serial number of their device. So, I think, but if town council says you don't have to, it's not a secret ballot, then I think we could take that position. If somebody wants to make the motion, just make sure, you know, what the quantum of vote is for it to become a secret ballot. And then, I guess, and then, I guess, then Anthony has to figure out, and Diane have to figure out whether we're going to pass out paper or what.
Well, yeah, electronic voting's come a long way in the past 10 years, 20 years. I had experience with it back in Brookline when I was there, and that was a, granted, that was a representative town meeting, but in theory, it's, it's works the same. So, we'll get clarification from town council on that and see what they say.
I think it might be helpful also for the moderator, perhaps, Tony, if appropriate, to make a statement as to whether or not at town meeting, the voting is anonymized effectively, or if it is recorded at time of and made available to anyone in the town as to the specific nature of a vote by any resident at any point. Just because I think that information, just for privacy, if you will, matters is, in terms of the retention of that voting record, is probably best to state upfront, rather than to have residents realize after the fact.
Yeah. I mean, I think your point is well-taken, that the full disclosure is the important thing here. So, somebody doesn't, somebody thinks that by pressing a button, their vote is recorded, but it's not tracked back to them, and somehow, it's different from standing up and letting everybody know, you know, what it is that you voted. The two of them seem to me to be about the same thing. Of one, you stand up and hold a card, and then the other, you press a button, and, and your vote is electronically recorded and identified with your, with your device. But, but I think we ought to nevertheless explain all of that and make sure town council says, you know, we don't need any sort of a special vote on that.
Yeah, again, electronic devices can be used either way, either as a summary, or it can be used, and it can be displayed, everybody's name and how they voted on an issue. Red, no, green, yes, yellow abstain. So, there is the means to do it anyway, and still accomplish a quicker town meeting.
Just to say it, my instinct is that I would do it the way you just said. That is, you get the summary of the total, yes, the total no, the total abstentions, but don't tag people's name. As soon as you introduce the issue of people are thinking their records, actually, record of how they vote, you're going to, you're going to have a problem with getting people to use the electronic stuff at all, I think.
And that's why I said for the first meeting, that we were planning on the summary and not the other method, because that's what we know other towns have used and used successfully.
And just to warn you, Anthony, somebody may object to that and want to know how everybody voted. It's, I hope at a special town meeting, that won't happen, but, you know, anything that can go wrong.
Yeah, this, this was something that was brought up to the, to the selectmen. We should explore. We did. We got the approval to use KIAZAC funds for it. Hopefully, people can see the benefit of coming into the 21st century on some of this stuff. If not, then we just box the devices up and put them in a closet.
Well, how about out of minimum, Tony, if it's straw votes for the last two? If someone comes up, to Tony's point, there's always someone who likes to be a stick in the mud, right? So, if that happens, maybe you can see how it goes for the petitions, because that's a straw vote. Just see how it works. Would that be maybe an option? Okay.
We'll take it. Right. I mean, efficiency is going to be the number one rule here. And if we run into some, you know, some peculiar problem, we'll do things in the most, in the simplest way possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are any other closing thoughts, comments? Seeing none? I move that the Finance Committee adjourn.
Second.
At 8:27. Second by Alex. All those in favor?
Hi, Karen. Hi, Susan.
Hi, David.
Hi, Alex.
Okay. Thank you very much for everyone that joined. We'll see you all Saturday morning.